According in progress and we'll call the meeting to order at seven oh eight. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda? Okay, I already made the motion in a second. Okay, anybody have any questions or? Additions to the agenda? All in favor? Okay, and then moving on to the minutes for November. Motion to accept the minutes. Okay, second. Okay, any comments, questions, corrections? Nobody has any, do we have a motion or do can we vote to approve? All in favor? Okay, great. Alright, so moving on, we can go quickly through Kim's report. Liz, I mentioned Kim's on here today, she's. So we've got. So coming up, it looks like we're continuing with. The chair yoga, technology help, jamming, book discussion, Lego clubs, more CPR classes coming up through January. Looks like and and our regular programs continue looking at the numbers for the program in November and December. The holiday decoration swap looked pretty good with twenty two adults. Looks like jamming was kind of down this month with two in November. Holiday market was great, we had a lot of people through, hundred and seventy people through. Yeah, it was, it was busy, that is for sure. Pictures with Santa, twenty two kids, twenty adults, I heard it went well, and I know, I think Kim, Julie and Jared were kind of talking about some other options to maybe attract more people, I think we have more competition now because places like Little Life are doing it and you know, that have more things to offer in terms of food and shopping and things like that. But I think they're talking about some ideas for what might make it more fun and attractive. The preparedness event was good, thirty two adults, I think that was the registration number, I'm not sure we got, yeah, that was a a good turnout, gingerbread houses, twenty four kids. And the blood drive, while we didn't meet our goal for the number of people that registered and we had people not show up, we ended up with we meeting our goal for the units donated and thanks to people who donate the Power Red, so. Yeah, so that was good. We're talking about if we might want to try to find a time earlier in December for the next year's blood drive because I think it's just.
Yeah, I was, I was actually gonna come down and I couldn't because of the school event with the kids, so like it's the week that they do.
Three times a year, yeah, so April and August have been booked and we just have to decide on December. Alrighty, let's see what else I've got here. Like. Circulation. Tracking alone. It looks like Kim's presentation to the seniors has been postponed, so that's going to be rescheduled. I did do the annual review with Kim, which was happy with it, it was a good discussion, so we can, so thank you for everybody last month on that. So, oh yeah, so the, as we were mentioning, with Kim being on the news, so Kim and Elaine did the required CPR first aid course in Albany, but it was very good, very worthwhile for the time, and that's where after you do that, then you can get the the coupon for the AED and then that was awarded at the ceremony at the Red Cross and Kim ended up being interviewed. So, and we've talked to the town board, so essentially because this, the one that we ordered, that was ordered for the youth commission that has been here in the library, where their town is going to, we're going to get the same model and then we're not going to like take this one down and put the new one up, we're just going to give that to the town and for the youth commission to handle it that way, so.
So the one that we, that was just donated, we will give to the.
Right, I mean, yes, I wouldn't, yeah, in other words, it's we're just not going to swap out what we've already stopped, it's the same thing, yeah. We spent a good amount of time, Kim spent a good amount of time this month, meeting a couple of times around bookkeeping, budgeting. We also brought in Patty Arntz, our former trustee, to help us with some stuff with cleaning up our, our books, so and I know Kim's gonna need to spend some more time on that, we have some unresolved issues from some some bookkeeping issues from the past that we need to get straightened out, and we have some suggested changes that Patty has brought forward to handle some of the things that we often get a little confused or things like that, so I think it's going to be very helpful, so hopefully we'll get off on the right foot in New Year, so that we're, it should make the reports a little easier to to run and read and make sense of as well. Plus, we don't, we were not going to have the, the youth commission lines that have always been a bit confusing because it's it's money, but it's not money, so we'll be working on that and also having a hold on. Oh, hold on. Oh, man. The report, it's not the P and L, just the other one, that's all of our.
The accounts report.
No, but not, but not just that, the, what do you call that, the other major report you have in financial reports? Total blank, no.
Which is a problem in law.
Right.
That's the monthly one.
Right, and that's like a much, not that time, this is the one that's like your whole, this is your history, like your assets, your.
Oh, that's a, that's a, it's called, it's called a financial report.
No, but it's called something else too, and it's such a, it's like.
Annual report.
If I could come up with this, you'd be, everybody would be like, of course, like it's like the most common thing you ever hear of. I'm sorry, it'll come to me soon, but anyway, we're gonna work on that. So the check for the grant was received and has been deposited, so that is in the money market account and so Kim was looking forward to sharing some updates with us, they, she met with Paul, the architect and Megan. They looked at some, they've gotten some samples of carpet and hardwood flooring, fixtures, all kinds of stuff, and the person came out to do the hazardous materials survey, so hopefully we'll have a report on that, I'm hoping that there won't be anything that we need to remediate or worry about, but you never know. She says, yeah. Yeah, yeah, she, he came out, he, she said he was very you couldn't get a read for like, if he was like, oh no, if he was like, it's all fine, so. More to come on that, but she did have some carpet square samples and things to show us, but we'll have to, we'll have to wait on that. But it makes, certainly makes it feel like it's real and moving forward. Group effort. Anybody have any questions or things we want to follow up with Kim or anything like that? Okay, moving on to treasures report.
We say, so you have the list of the accounts from Broadview, including the rent money for capital improvements, which was deposited in the money market regular account. We still are, and Sarah is going to help with this, we still have issues with Broadview as far as anybody but Sarah having able to find the CD on the website.
Sarah is a very important person.
We don't understand this at all.
You can't log in, right?
And she, she can't even log in, so when we asked Broadview, they said, well, we've left messages for Sarah and whatever, so we'll have to go meet with them and sit down and say, okay, boys and girls, you know, how, we just want to see what it is. I mean, I know we put the money there, I have receipts, etc.
They have not left messages. And I told them that I am not primary any.
Okay, well then babe, alright, so that's, I will have to go visit with them again and say, what do we need to do, boys and girls?
And they're going into spam or something?
No, you know, they're just, it's, I mean, it took us three years to get the treasurer before Sarah off the account. And her, and when they gave us a new credit card, it was in her name. So these people, other, I mean, but we want to stay with them because last year they were really nice to us. I mean, so, you know, as much as I'd like to bail on them. Got to stay with them. I don't know if I like that in the bank, but I can go along with it, I mean, you know, I'd rather baby be a little bit more, you know, able and mean. Okay, so the next thing, I went ahead and printed out all five pages of the profit and loss, just because it is the end of the year. So in case you wanted to look at it as far as the line cost expenses by line, this was the most up to date thing, as of the seventeenth of December. We are running a little bit of a deficit right now, we, well, we're right at seventeen hundred above, and I'm sure by the end of the, end of the two next weeks, we're going to have a little bit of a deficit at the end of the year. This does not include though the most recent annual report money that might have come in over the last ten days, so.
Which should be over eight thousand.
You know, I, I did not go into day to see what that was. But I just wanted to give everybody the most up to date information on this. That should be right there, yeah, that, that you got, this is the last page.
I was trying to separate it.
But I mean, this just gives you an idea, and the more you look at this, the more you realize that we have, almost everything we have is non discretionary. Everything pretty much is exactly what our expenses are, our costs are, and there is hardly any fat in this budget at all. And I just want you to remember that because later on, we're going to be talking about the twenty twenty five budget and you know, it's the same situation. We, we decided this year to increase our fundraising income to try to do that. We've come close to that, but we're still probably going to be in a minor, a little bit of a deficit by the end of the year, not too much, but a little bit. But our expenses are a hundred and forty thousand and the budget was a hundred and thirty three, so we had a little bit higher expenses than was, you know, asked for.
So last year, in addition to just deciding that we would try to make up that difference by increasing the amount we bring in with fundraising, we also decided to not budget for putting money into our reserve accounts, which we've been doing six thousand for the previous set of years, so. It's that sounds so neat, it's kind of even worse than it looks in a sense, you know, because we've, you know, that's, that's not there, now granted, we haven't had to use a lot of money out of those accounts yet, but they're, we're building up for things like painting the building and, you know, all that kind of stuff, so.
Is there a particular area where we really kind of tanked budget wise, like a specific line?
It's, it's not so much, we're like on track in terms of what we anticipate, it's just that we are not able to bring in the revenue.
Well, I mean, you know, we anticipated last year, the budget we approved was, expenses were one thirty three and right now we're at one forty. That is basically a variety of things, of course, that also includes the whole thing, the summer camp expenses, which I can never make any sense out of. I'm so glad that's leaving, but it's just, there is no specific area that we were over. Just a little, just, you know, a little here and there, like, you know, believe it or not, heating oil is less, electricity is less, a lot of things, insurance is the same. Books were like fifteen hundred dollars more. For example. You know, I mean, that kind of thing, you know, so books were much higher than we anticipated. Museum subscriptions, and we'll talk more about that, they're in the budget idea, they were like almost a thousand dollars more. You know, just that kind of stuff, so it just kind of adds up. Everything else, wages and all that was exactly what we, what we thought was going to be.
What about expenditures for programs?
Programs. I don't think they were, program expense was budgeted last year at let's see what the whole thing was here, hold on, let me drop down. Program expense was fourteen thousand eight fifty and it actually turned, came in at seventeen five. So it was about twenty five hundred dollars more. Yeah, so, I mean, so you add those three together, that's where you're coming up with the, with the overage.
The annual appeal letter, that's about eight thousand, seven, eight thousand dollars difference.
Yeah, that's, that's what's going to happen on that is currently, this, this shows the annual appeal is at fifty nine hundred, so put that to basically fourteen thousand. With eight thousand, eight thousand dollars more, so you're going to be very close to what was budgeted.
So with the summer camp changing, does that?
That's, that was a wash, that was pretty much a wash, right?
Well, except, so there was two components to that, so there was the expenses, which we would get the money for and pay back out, which is, that's parts of wash. But we were getting money for administering the program, so that's also gone for twenty twenty five.
Do you think that not having it would be beneficial financially, what it?
Yes, it'll be beneficial in terms of Kim's time, so the time, I mean, that was what we were being reimbursed for, sort of. And for her administration of it, but it took a lot of her time, so without her doing that, we should have more time for her with programming and other duties, so.
So that, this is the December profit and loss, we will have one in January, that will be the year end, compare that to the budget that we'll be talking about later in the meeting.
And by then we should be pretty close to seeing where we are with the annual.
Oh, we'll be, we'll be locked in on.
Say that again.
The annual appeal will be totally finished by then, or at least the figures.
Yeah.
But I mean, if we get some annual appeal money that comes in in January, we would apply it to this year.
Right, yeah.
Because we have to do that, that's just the way, that's how we have to do that. So any, any questions, I mean, we're going to go play with the Broadview people and try to get the CD set up. Because it is fifty thousand a CD, so. There's fifty thousand in there.
The lawn care and landscaping that went way above. Was that due to, wasn't there a flood or something, it was on, I don't see it or, or some.
There's historically been a flood, so.
We're under. On land.
Yeah, lawn care, we budgeted it two thousand dollars and it came in at nine ninety.
Okay. I see what you're saying.
Alright. Facility repairs was twelve hundred dollars more than was anticipated, that's mainly that door. And some new steps, pest control was right exactly where it should be. And landscaping itself was budgeted at two thousand dollars and we only spent about a hundred and five. So that's some nice, some nice news there.
Right.
Yeah, if you, if you kind of just go by line, you're kind of up and down, up and down.
Yeah.
Just.
And that door was technically, I mean, we're, we're going to run into this again, so the door, I think, was supposed to be replaced in, what's this, twenty four, twenty three? You know, we started those discussions and that process then moved over, and now we're going to have the same thing happening with the windows that we're talking about, you know, like we're thinking about it this year, but now it's going to drag over. Yeah. So one of the things that we're talking about with the bookkeeping as well is so we haven't really Kim hasn't really been showing a fund balance at the end of the year, and in previous years, we have had a balance, and so right now, that's a little bit like not visible, I guess.
When you say fund balance, what, what do you mean by that?
So in previous years, we have had money left over that we haven't spent at the end of the year, and.
You mean, in, income that came in that we didn't spend?
Right, yeah.
Well, that's.
And I think way back, like, that was what originally the, the the reserves were funded by that, and I'm looking at Scott because he's probably been here during that time. And then we started actually budgeting for the reserves to say, we can't just say if we have leftover, yeah, we'll put it in the reserves, we will do it that way, but.
We're not going to have any because we got one thirty eight.
Right, I mean, this, this year, we're, we're not.
That was the same situation last year, was there was an, any, any wash left.
So I think we have, and this is kind of anticipating the budget discussion, but talking to Kim too, like, we do have money that is not set aside in the reserve accounts, that's in like the money market savings. That is available for operational expenses, so it hasn't been earmarked for the reserve accounts.
Yeah, I mean, we do have a prudent reserve of about fifty thousand dollars in the money market, I mean, we took thirty five of it and put it in the CD. But we do have that CD now, is that you could look at that as a prudent reserve. Because that's about fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, but except the CD has specific, it's money out of specific accounts, so like scholarship money isn't there.
Came out, it came out of the money market, it came out as, some of it came out of scholarship until it came out of the special projects accounts.
Right, so I mean, some of that has to be specifically used.
For that.
But the money market's available for anything.
Right, right. Yeah, so if you're looking at the accounts and you're like, how come we don't have enough money in the scholarship account for two years, it's because that money's in, now being shown in the CD or, or not showing the CD, but that's where it is, we're not, we haven't run out of scholarship money, we haven't run out of the, so that's because I did double take when I saw that the first time, I was like, whoa.
And the special projects is like fifty one thousand dollars, you know, before the money was taken out for the CD. So any, any questions on any of this, I know it's a lot of information.
How are we collecting fines, or is that?
We're fine free now, so.
That's why, that's why I wondered how we were fined, because I know that mine practically renewed, so.
I think like bill, bill, either people will bill for, for billed books, so if, if you never return it.
Okay, then, then you would cut, and that makes sense, I just.
Right, at that point, it's not like a fine, it's a, you got to replace. Yeah, yeah.
That makes sense, or CD or DVD.
Right, yeah.
Just curious.
Does anybody have any objection if we jump to the budget, since we're kind of in the groove of that, and then we'll go back, so are you okay with that? Mine as well, right?
Okay. Here.
Flower, flower.
Alright, there are.
Warped up to the topic.
There are three parts of this, there are the breakout of the wages, so take one, pass along. That should be, if it runs out, I got an extra one here. There is also a summary of the museum passes. Since it's a pretty heavy line item, I thought everybody would like to see exactly how that looks. And this is the most recent budget that I think we agreed on, I'm pretty sure, this was like, there was a lot of back and forth over the last couple of weeks, this was the last, the update that I got from Kim, and there's four copies here. So three can go down that side, this pass, and then I got three over there.
Do you want me to run off a couple more?
No, no, I got, I got plenty. And then you get one. And I got an extra one, okay, good. Alright, so.
Thanks for making Christmas colors.
Well, you know, this is a lot, once again, this is identical to the P and L, it's just, I did do it on both sides. The yeah, so the middle one, be careful, because one of the ones you're going to have that's not in color is, that's the monthly one. The one in color is the annual one proposed for next year. So the middle column is actual year to date that has been spent. And then you've got, and it's as, you know, updated as we could make it. You know, this is what drives me crazy in dealing with Kim, because she likes to go back and forth and nothing, she does a great job, but it I'd never quite catch it when her most recent things are there in Intuit, so this may not exactly match what I printed out in December. But it's, yeah. But we're projecting expenses next year of a hundred and thirty seven, seven fifty. We are anticipating income total income of one twenty seven. Excuse me, one thirty two, three. So we're about five thousand, about, excuse me, I show here ten thousand four fifty shortage.
And again, this doesn't include putting any money into reserves this year.
No money into reserves, this, this once again sets the annual appeal at fifteen thousand, other fundraising events are about ten thousand dollars with the trivia night, looking like we can at least hopefully make eight thousand dollars off of two trivia nights, we may want to go to three, it was a big success, we'll be talking about that later. And if you look at the expenses, there's really not a whole lot that we can cut. Because we tried our, we tried our darnedest. You know, everything in there is pretty much, the facility repairs is only twenty seven hundred dollars, I mean, it's like fifteen hundred. You just look at the green column and it's almost identical to what it was on the current, the current projected budget. So this is really, we are lucky that we're going to have Kim for more programming time, because Cecilia will be helping us with bookkeeping and she has decided she's going to donate her time on that. So that will free up Kim from some bookkeeping. I will have to make sure that Cecilia and I figure out exactly how she wants to communicate all this, but basically, I just go into the Intuit website and I print this out. This is how I, this is how I come up with this information. And then what we did over the last month is Jennifer, Kim and I met two or three times to hash out what we thought was fair as far as expenses, if there weren't expenses, it could be cut, we cut them, if there weren't any, if they had to increase some, we did that. As for example, the Upper Hudson dues are going up this year, is that correct? Did I read that right?
I believe so.
Yeah, they went up. Yeah, the dues, the dues are the same, somebody went up. The three fifty, was it, somebody went up.
I think that, was it the, the ebooks?
Ebooks, might have been, the ebooks went up, yeah.
Which is part of like, you know, an agreement with them. Where is that?
That would be on your programs. That's in the programs area.
Yeah, ebooks went up a little bit. So the like I said, we, we lost the money from the town for administering the youth program, we we are going to be done with the money from the Zook account for books, so there'll be more money that we need to put forward for purchasing books. We also took out the money that we haven't spent the past years in the marketing expenses, that's a little bit of a risk because we may need to be we may want to be trying to do more marketing ahead of the four fourteen, not specifically about that, but getting the good word out. But that was something that where we haven't been spending and it was something that could be cut. So the other thing to keep in mind is the area where we I suppose it is discretionary, but I don't think we've viewed it as some, an area where we want it to not make the changes is in salaries. So we have consistently been having increases both for the director and for the assistants. So the assistants, I mean, it's just been keeping up basically with minimum wage to keep it one step above minimum wage, not much is what we had agreed to for this year as well, but we did, did you know, the past several years, we have made decent increases for Kim, reflecting all of the work that she's doing, so that is an area where we have chosen to move forward. With that, where we could have said no.
Yeah, payroll went from seventy eight to eighty three, so that was, that's probably your biggest single increase. Insurance, good news is it's about the same.
Which is a nice surprise.
Considering we're out of the, out of the camping business, so I think they were so relieved, they just renewed it as news. Dude, that underwriting was, was under this bridge.
One other area where we can, after we complete the annual appeal this year, we can look at the report again and see, so the past two years, we have increased the cost of that because we have not done it in-house and we increased significantly the number of people that we mail to, so instead of just donors, we've been mailing to the whole town, and we have gotten new donors from that. But we could make a decision to say, okay, we, we've reached out to them for two years, if they haven't responded, maybe we don't do such a big mailing, and that would, you know, we could, we could decrease the cost of that.
You know, honestly, that makes sense, because the, the mar, the housing market, there was a big
Right, we had.
In that over the last couple of years, but it kind of slowed down a little bit.
Yeah, it's a good point, yeah. So there are small areas where we can look at costs, but like Richard said, there's not much that's discretionary. And I don't think it's the time. Uh, to say, well, let's drastically cut programs or. Cut, but I mean, like you need to show that we are. You know, we need to be providing service to the town.
How do you think this play with the, the four fourteen? Conversation? Really, I didn't know if you had a feel for. Well, I mean, I get that. I'm just wondering like if it, if like we're showing that we're doing everything we can to keep our expenses in line and, you know, we're. Treading water at best.
I think my sense is people will be cranky. Or some people will be cranky.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, yes. Okay.
It was close the last time.
I know, I know. I heard how close it was. That's terrifying. So I mean, the worst case scenario though was still, we'd stay at the same level. Okay, well, that's, yeah.
And I think we have a, we have to show though that at that point, I mean, it's.
Yeah.
Something has to give. So if we are not able to increase that funding, then we are gonna have to make those hard choices that.
And that has to be part of our argument for the.
Yeah, because right now we're looking at approximately a, a ten thousand dollar deficit, approximately. And, you know, we do have some prudent reserves, but they, you know, you don't want to dip into them. Through this pure ten thousand, because then you'd be out of business in, you know, five years. And that's terrifying.
And, and the preserves that are set across, set aside for um for maintenance and painting and stuff, I mean. They're, they're, they will be spent immediately as soon as we do that work, you know, they're not, they're not. They're, they're gonna be just enough of that, so um.
No, I think, I think we have a, a good argument to take to the town saying, you know, we're doing absolutely everything we can and we've increased services over the last. You know, when's the last time we got a four fourteen? I, I don't know.
Eight. I think it might be eight, right?
I don't, it was at least five years.
Yeah.
It was when we first moved up full time, so about eight years ago.
Yeah. So I mean, that's the, 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 the argument is that, you know, look what's, what's happened with inflation. Look at everything else, expenses have gone up, et cetera, and look at all the services we provide now that we didn't eight years ago. I mean, both of those are very legitimate arguments. Because, you know, if you look at what Kim's report says, I mean, a lot of her programs are very, very well attended.
I think the demographics. Of the town haven't changed that much.
Okay.
So they're gonna be the people who say, I don't use the library, I pay taxes, I don't want to. They're not changing.
Understand.
Um. I have the questions of being of the. People who voted yes the last time. They are probably still around and. They'll be receptive.
And there are probably a few more.
That's right. And the question is, at the margins.
Has, has Steven Town grown at all in the last eight?
No, actually, I think the population may have shrunk a bit, but I think the.
Even, even with the, the northern migration from.
I think it's probably lost, I, I get the.
I think it's losing more younger families and, and older people have come in with a little bit more money.
And so at the mo, this, this. Our race, like the national race, will be at the margins. It's, I really, I really.
That, that, that's terrifying.
Now, the good, the good, what's interesting with the victims, for example, like. Like when. Lebanon was concerned about its budget. That school budget passed by an overwhelming.
Yeah, they did.
Which is. Way different than the discussion was about eight years ago. Where school budgets were passing. So that's encouraging. But it's, I, I think it's very hard to know. I mean, it's very hard for, you guys have more of a. Finger on the pulse of this community. I'm sort of isolated, so I don't really kind of break sense, but. I think, I think we're gonna look at the similar picture to the picture we were looking at last year.
Yeah, I mean, it feels like we've brought in new people and there's new people that are engaged, but it's hard to really. Say, and I feel like we've built up a good amount of goodwill uh with different groups than we've made. I think we have a positive. There's generally a positive feeling about the library. I mean, that doesn't necessarily.
I think that's true.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't think that.
The only thing is, I think there's a maybe more negative um perspective about taxes.
No, very much so.
Yeah.
Yeah, people are really cranky.
Alright, so I did also want to make sure that you looked at the museum pass program, which is. Very popular. Um, and what we decided was that the ones that. And what was Missy again? That was in Schenectady, right?
My side, yeah.
My side, yeah, okay, yeah. Yeah. And, and then Benford, uh, we only had, had very few people use that. Um, and then uh the uh USS Slater. Uh, hardly anybody used that, so. The ones that were not popular, we just kind of dropped them. And.
If it makes any difference, I mean, nothing of.
I'm sorry?
I knew that, I didn't know any of this was.
See, that, that's the thing is, is I don't think people are aware of the museum program. I mean, we tried to promote it on the website. We have signs for it. But if you ask nine out of ten people in the library, they would say, oh, I can get a, a, a pass to the Rockwell. Or, uh, you know, if the Rockwell's not here, you get a Rockwell or Mass Mocha or something. And, you know, I get like half price tickets there. Yeah. And for free from the library, if you remember the library.
That's great.
So I think that's, you know, that's something that, and I know we have the same issue in Pittsfield.
Yeah.
That we don't promote it near as much as we do. And of course, there it's, you know, we have like three thousand in, in uh museum passes. But um, you know, I just don't, it's amazing to me how many people are just not aware of this.
How do, how do you, how does it get reserved?
Are you, at the front desk, you say, I'd like your museum pass for such, such a date, they'll say it's available or it's not available. If somebody else has it, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Well, yeah, or you can, if it's available that day, you can do it that day.
Same, yeah, yeah.
Usually we keep it for like. A couple days, like a certain amount of time.
Yeah. Yeah, but I mean, it's, it's available, whatever the time the museum is open, this is, and on the, on the right, it shows you what the advantages are, and maybe we need to say in the museum pass, you know. Promotion, this is what you're getting, because people may just say, oh, I get to go to the museum. What is, you know, does that mean I get five dollars off, whatever? Hey, some of them look like free.
Right.
Well, we can certainly include that in the four fourteen.
Oh, for sure. I mean, that's what I'm saying. Is this kind of thing?
Right.
Is, is in the four fourteen, uh, all the programs that we do. Uh, I certainly think the trivia night, uh, if it continues to be popular, I think that will help. Uh, you know, it's, it's kind of a fundraiser, but it's also kind of a community event type thing, you know, so. Uh, you know, but I just want people to be aware of this because. You know, tell your, tell the people that are in the library, tell them about it, because the more people use it, they'll say, hey, I went to the museum and it only cost me ten dollars. You know, and, you know, that would be, oh, really? The library did that? Oh, cool. Yeah, so exactly this. You know, I just, I, I just am amazed how many people don't know about the museum pass program.
I mean, my major concern about the four fourteen is the confluence of the. Improvement of the.
Yeah, that's the other, the other problem is that we have that, that matching grant.
Which. Which goes multiple ways.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, exactly. The folks who are complaining like. And they're spending money on the children's room too, my God.
Right, except that we're.
Will be cranky about that and the people who we serve won't be.
Right. I mean, that's primarily, it's gonna be, you know, donation and the grant.
Yeah.
Yeah, you have to take, take, take advantage of those things when you.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah. Right, it gets.
Somehow we'll get lost in the shop.
It'll get lost for the people who are, I don't use it, I don't care, and they're asking me for more, and the folks who. You know, sort of are, are here and coming here will appreciate that.
Yeah.
We're just trying.
But that's also sort of on us, how we, how we message it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we message it and we message more things that are available, like the computers and the, you know, a lot of the stuff that people don't know about. I mean, there's a lot of people that just say, well, I never use the library, I don't read books, yada, yada. And you're like, okay. Well, do you know that you have free access to computers there? Do you have this? Do you have that?
My, my concern is not the, our messaging, my concern is how it gets received.
I, I understand, I understand, but you know, I mean.
Anybody follow the Bethlehem vote? For the, they, they proposed a huge um redo of their library. And that's a huge library to begin with, but it, it failed. But I mean, it was, I forget how many millions a dollar. I mean, it was like.
Three million or something like that.
Oh, I, I might have it. I think it was more. I feel like it's like a, like a. I think pretty resounding. Yeah, I think, and it sounded like a lot of people leave in support of the library, like we support it, but this is just crazy.
Bridge too far.
Yeah, yeah.
They also bought themselves some bad press last year too, or two years ago with the, the drag queen. Children's hours.
Oh, oh, I don't.
They're trying to do that. Got a lot of trouble with that. Even though it was finally approved, okay.
Definitely made me feel more uh better about our very, very small project. I was like, I can't even imagine.
I think we, if you kind of promote. Not just the library, because a lot of people hear library and I don't use it, same mentality. I don't use it, I'm not fine, but it's become. Kind of a fifty percent or, or forty percent community center.
Right.
I mean, I stopped in with the kids the other day and there were older adults. Playing Mahjong together and doing puzzles and stuff. So there's like that demographic and then you've got the kids and the, the families that come in for the holiday things. It's become really. A large portion community center. So if you market it that way, that it's not just. A library, it's the town, it's becoming the town community center. You know, that you might start to appeal to some of these older adults who also. May not use it as a library, but may look into the interest of community center. If I can get a ride down there, maybe I can communicate. With other adults my age, you know, and, and we facilitate that, that.
Right, yeah. And I think it is being seen more that way, you know, um, with certain people.
So if you started to talk about that.
And Kim said that was one of her. Projects that she wanted to do with more of the senior.
Right, yeah, exactly. Yeah, reach out to them and see, yeah, absolutely.
Certain boys, five or six years.
And, and the annual appeal, that was, it, it addressed that too pretty well.
Ended that friends with love.
Yeah. And I think the new, I think some of the folks at the seniors now are more, might be more receptive to trying to do some more things together, you know, see what we can bring to them.
Take the, the negative. Connotation out of it and plug it in with something new, it's a little bit brighter and you'll maybe flip that switch a little bit for people.
Yeah.
To be like, oh, yeah, they are doing a lot more for the community. Let's, let's give them a little bit more money to work with to do that.
Right, yeah.
Um, you might get.
Okay, so to approve the budget for next year, do you want us to wait until next week until we have the absolute final numbers?
No, I think we need to do it in the screening.
I, I mean, how do you want to do it? I don't know. I mean, because we're, you know, basically, this is as close as we're gonna get, although you can say. You know, add eight thousand dollars to the income. But.
From the annual.
From the annual appeal.
Right, but that's not gonna change.
That's not gonna change what we're looking at.
Twenty twenty five, yeah.
So.
Alright.
You know, and.
So I guess let's get a motion to approve the budget a second and then we can. Uh, take any. Discuss, I mean, we've already discussed it, but I mean, we can take formal discussion on it or if there's any changes uh or. So is there a motion?
I'll get the motion.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Second. Okay.
Any further discussion? All the question.
Most have approved?
We have to vote it, yeah. I want to give everybody a final chance to, yeah.
And make no mistake, if we suddenly discover in all of these conversations that we've had. Put the here and the ones that Kim and Jennifer and I, um, we'll certainly be able to amend things. I mean, this is, this is as close as we get, get to lock it in, but if something earth shattering happens, you know, we can certainly look at it again.
Yeah, I mean, my sense would be like. Of course, it's not a whole lot to kind of question, so we'll just raise the one more.
Yeah, I think, I think.
It's really this.
Yeah, I mean, that, that, I mean, that really, we're, we're pretty much locked in to, to the expenses. I mean, I have the same problem at the church that I'm a treasurer for. It's just nothing you can do. So you have to try to raise more money. That's all you can try to do.
Yeah, and I think basically. Our ability to raise money is, I think, the function is, how do you have some more functions that. Sort of folks will buy into, buys value. It's not just asking for money.
Oh, no, I think, I think the, uh, certainly the, the market was very successful, right? We made some good money off of that or.
Was that eight, I, eight? I think it was about, huh? What'd you say? You bet.
He has another hundred dollars.
Oh.
Yes, party, it was the after shit.
Cool.
I think it was about eight hundred dollars.
Make that nine hundred.
It's from the event, it looks like. That'd be in the six, nine, nine, one, forty six category, so.
Of course.
About that line right there, we miscellaneous fundraising income events would be in there probably.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I'm just trying to, I thought I sent Kim an email with what we collected. I think it was eight hundred.
Okay, that makes sense.
That's close to it.
Yeah, because I think last year we were a thousand. I think we're quite there this year, so. Um. Okay.
Alright, so.
Going for a hundred, do I have two hundred?
All the question, I guess.
Anybody, any, anybody?
Out there, we're all good.
Okay, all in favor of approving the budget as is?
Right.
Alright, okay.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Tough going, tough going. Alright, so let's jump back uh to uh committee reports. Well, that'd be good, book brand, marketing and fundraising, we can talk about. Leave into our plans for fundraising.
On the subject of raising money. Um. I, I missed the meeting last time, so I'm pretty, you discussed it quite, quite a lot then, but I'd say it's pretty much a resilient, it's a success. We did a survey of twenty three people who um signed up. We had ninety seven people in total, but twenty three signed up for tables.
The, like the emails for.
And, and of those, eighteen percent completed the survey, which is a pretty. Rate response rate, um, seventy eight percent, and they overwhelmingly really liked it. Um. Forty four percent said it was good and fifty six percent said it was excellent. And eighty three percent said they would be very likely to attend. Another trivia fundraiser, and in the verbatims, people were saying that they. Um, wanted to have it more often. It was incredibly fun, never laughed so hard. Uh, you can, I mean, in all my life, uh.
Once again. What's that? Oh, no, it says, one of them said, I yelled at them. Somebody said, I needed a mic because I yelled.
Yeah, I, I actually think it wouldn't be a bad.
No, it's not a bad idea to have a mic. As a rule, I don't like them, but it's okay.
Yeah, I think it was really good that when we asked, um, it sounds like the food was, you know, the. That, that was fine, you know, we could, we could do better. And if we do go to the fire hall, we have more flexibility and what we offer, but you know, people were not. Complaining, certainly.
Surprisingly good for what I was paid for.
Yeah.
I was like.
Cause sandwiches were good, yeah.
I didn't eat them, so I didn't know, but um. Uh, there are a couple of places that I think we could save some money. Um, you know, I think we thought that the high um. Prize money was a big draw and maybe people aren't honest, but if they were being honest, they did not say that that was a big draw. And really, they, they, the draw was getting together, they loved trivia, uh, wanting to get together with friends, it's something unusual, and they wanted to support the lives. So, um, we could save a little money there. And also, um, we asked how they learned about the event and only one person. Um, said that they uh learned about it from the post party in the mailbox, so we can probably save.
Save that expense, yeah.
That expense as well, um. So I think we should definitely do it more frequently. There's some interesting verbatims around how, how they'd like to see things done a little bit differently. That we should consider in the future. Um, but I think we should have to do at least two. Um, uh, here and maybe three.
Yeah, that's it. I think we were talking about doing one March the twenty first, weren't we? Thinking of a solstice one? Praying solstice one?
Did we get that specific? I don't.
It seemed like a good day.
Okay, yeah.
We were talking about March, yeah.
Richard, I'm just saying, yet another call out about the opera question. Boy, that really rubbed me away.
Hey, that, that's fun to do that. It's fun to rub people the wrong way. No, we're the opera. I mean, yeah, I mean, the only thing I, 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 I thought we should do at the end is like people want to know where their team ranked.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's the only thing. But no, and I did well not be an opera question.
I, I think considering that we were flying blind, really good job of number of questions, the pacing. And the difficulty of the questions, um. You know, I, I think that was really, really good, so. We should do more of them, it's a lot of work, um, so I don't know if I'm in favor of three, I would like to do.
Well, let's do one, let's plan for one in March and see how it goes. And then how tired we are and how much work is this, I think the firehouse will save. A lot of issues as far as chairs and tables and just the mechanic, just.
Do a lot with the organizing. You know, started, I can help you. I just came for the day, but I.
One thing I'd like to, what I was gonna propose, and if nobody minds jumping around, um, I thought it might be helpful this year, um, to have sort of a. Organizational meeting or su- such in January before our January board meeting to talk about this kind of stuff, like. Get actually choose the dates of events that we're gonna have, get them on the calendar so we know, choose the dates, because we also kind of got. A lot of stuff got piled up towards the end, so we had annual peel right on top of the trivia fundraiser and stuff like that, see if we can get a calendar going of our. Events and everything that's going on and talk about if not committees, but you know, who, who can, who can be. Involved in the different projects, kind of lay out the three or four main things that we need to. To deal with this, yeah, and and kind of assign that and that way, I, I think it could be beneficial to us if we could get that rolling in January if people think that that's. A worthwhile amount, you know, spending, spending time worthwhile way, um, to get us off to a good start, um, and that way. You know, not in a board meeting that then gets us. You know, hours sleep, um, one night.
Right, right. Um, I also think that in addition to this trivia night, it would be a good idea to do something that's really family oriented, I, I just have this. Um, rosy remembrance of the Tubbs Scat Theater in Montclair, New Jersey where kids and families came and, you know, and we. Throw the, ooh, but this and you get a prize and you do the three legged race and. We could use that property right next to, um, Fort Fatale, I think it's a perfect space for. Um, that kind of thing. Do we have to go through, oh, you have to go.
School property.
You know, that's why they have soccer games and whatnot, so I think it is school property.
Yeah, we'll find others.
Um, but well, something like that, it could even be, I mean, if we can get the grounds cleaned up here, we could even do it here, um, it doesn't have to be. Big, but it's nice because that's flat, so you can do a lot of things.
Are you saying like as a fundraiser?
Like a family carnival type thing, games and, and you know, food and, you know. Horse shoes and corn, corn, cornhole and cornhole tournaments, uh, they do one in Lebanon and that just. Draws them like crazy. Cornhole tournaments.
Saying that to the trivia, but like maybe that could be one that.
The only thing about the cornhole is, and maybe I'm wrong about this, but it, it's not great for little kids, it's more like adult.
You can set up, you can set up one for kids.
No, I know, I, I want something that, that brings more little kid families.
But do like a suck, do that, but then maybe as an additional one, do a cornhole.
So the fireman's muster used to be back in the day, a parade first. To the muster field and then in the muster field while the fire muster was going on, they also had. Kid games and stuff, I mean, that was, yeah, it was like, it. And 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 then the block dance was, you know, at night, but like it was. The thing to look forward to as a kid.
Yeah, and I think we need something like that, and I think if the library could sponsor it, we could bring in quite a lot of money and people would be really into it.
It is a lot of work, though, so it's, it's. I'm, I'm looking around and thinking, how are we gonna do? That. Or can we get?
We'll scale it down a little, we'll, we'll figure out what we are able to do and it doesn't have to be enormous, but. And maybe get some partnerships with other organizations in town or something.
Right.
Some of the, if. Actu- like, the way you're describing it sounds sort of similar to like the Halloween party or the Easter party where we have like. Games for the kids and stuff like that, and so I'm, and I think people really enjoy those events because they're free and.
Yeah, no, this is.
You would have to really make it worth paying for, not just like, come to a similar thing as that we do.
I'm, I'm envisioning that there is adult things to do too, but there's also things where families feel like, oh, this is great, you know, we can, we can go with.
Like a dunk, a dunking booth and that kind of crazy, you know, and those are always popular.
Pay five dollars to have Richard ask an opera question, but you have to stunk him instead.
Anyway, just another idea.
No, I, I think that would be kind of a summer event would be something we could, we could maybe cobble together.
Yeah, because trivia seems like a good thing when it's cold and not so nice outside, but when we have, you know, good weather, it'd be nice to do. One thing that includes more.
The thing I always want, we, um, we have. Locally that I could take the kids to in the warmer months, it's like live music and, you know, we did live at the library and. Then it was like over saturated.
Yeah, we overdid live at the library, yeah.
But that's the thing that I would enjoy taking them to, like. Wrap, you know, that I would feel inclined to pay for, I think, have like games and stuff and maybe.
And plus music, yeah.
Um, I mean, and there's other, the people that have been channeling.
I have two weeks off coming up, so.
If I could cut it down to three sentences, I mean, come on now.
A bio for, for Sadie as well, just to get things up the. And then our next marketing meeting is going to be nine AM on January sixth, if anyone.
Anything else on that? Scott, did you have policies for us to review this?
No, I think the only thing we did last. Um, meeting, we talked about. Policy, I mean, children. Yeah, I think ultimately you just need to decide what you want to do.
Okay, so is that in your court or in Kim's court? But what, there was something to review, right, like a, what we have currently?
Yeah, I would assume it would be on days where the schools are closed and, and the library is open or something like that. Worked here and was homeschooling, the boys could be here and do work while she was at work.
It was sort of got an issue there.
Okay, so, well, we'll start back in the new year with the next round of.
The fact that it's not an issue suggests that you may not need a policy for that stuff. You may need a policy in the event that someone asks about it, but there's no one, I think, can.
Um, odd little thing that happened today was at Fat Body Custom waiting for my car and there was a chatty, nice gentleman there and, uh. He was chatting, I was, um, and it turns out his wife is the director of the Grafton Library. And I guess he's been on the board for many years, but, and so I said, I'm. Board of our library, and, um, he said, is, and it just really took me back, he's like, is your la- library the one that has a policy that. Children, no children under twelve should be in the library without supervision, and I was like, it was so specific and everything, I was like. Oh, my gosh, is that our policy? I think it is our policy, we just talked about that, but is there a problem with that policy? And I said, yeah, I think that is our policy, and he said, I really like that, and I said, oh. I, I, maybe, maybe Grafton has been having a deal with something, maybe like, I don't know, I assume it's something like that, but yeah, it was really. Yeah, very, very specific.
Along with state law on children's supervision, like children ten years old and under can't be. Ten years, I think a ten year old can be at home by themselves, but not with any other siblings, um, you have to be twelve or thirteen. And it, it might have changed since I was part of New York, but like that was part of our New York State education discussions, so I know those. Um, for a fact, and, and you. Get called into that a lot more down in the city area where older siblings are, you know, caring for their youngers and. What are the guidelines and guidances if something were to happen, so I think that that's an excellent policy to have in place so that, you know. There aren't unsupervised children in adherence to state law. You don't want to violate, you don't want to say, okay, that's not a policy here and state law is saying, you absolutely can't. You know.
Okay, building and grounds?
Uh, there's nothing really except for, I think that picnic table is still sitting out there and needs to be carted to the transfer station. And I think you, me and Toby are gonna do it, so we need to make a date. Early twenty twenty five. Or whenever you can do it, because you have the vehicle.
Yeah.
Yeah. Between now and nine years. Yeah, that's fine, that's fine, just as long as we really make a, yeah, I'm a, remember this time. Okay, maybe, maybe we could have some coffee and then.
Where, where is he?
It's out by the shed behind the library, but we need a truck.
If it magically, if, if it magically disappears because I have time, you can talk my husband into it, I'll let you know.
Would it fit in a van? I got a pretty big van.
I'm not sure, it's, it's, it's sort of.
Because it's wide and.
Very wide, yeah.
Have to break it apart.
Um, and I also had said that I was gonna put little trees out there and as you can see, I have not done so, I haven't found any of the trees. I got some very expensive little trees, like Zimas, and I.
A good time to get little trees out at forty three, um, the forty three farms. At the end of the year, they do an end of the year clearance on a lot of their stuff and you get some of the little trees like half price.
Really?
One that's, that's on the way.
It's all the way down. And, and so they do, i- i- it's late in the season, but it's not too late to plant, uh, a tree as long as you mulch it good.
Yeah, I wasn't even planning to plant them, I was planning to get ones that, yeah, little potted, that are alive, but.
In a dormant condition or or moving towards that, but for what you're looking for, it's a great time to purchase, you know, something like that.
That's it for building and grounds, I'm most, there's.
Not till the spring, right? Okay, new business, Lee has, has expressed her interest in joining the board, we didn't scare her away last time and she stayed through this part. Lee, do you have any questions for us or anything you want to clarify, and unfor- unfortunately with Kim not here, I don't have a binder of our. Board information, but we'll get that for you, I think we still owe you one too. But, uh, anything you want to? Okay, then we'll just ask you to step out for a few moments and then we will call you back in. Okay, so can I, uh, what do we, we do a motion for this too, right, motion to, uh, approve Lee as our new, oh, I didn't do that. I didn't get that dates, hold on.
Yeah, what are your dates?
Oh, wait, yeah, I know.
She's, she's replacing somebody's term, right?
Yes.
She's replacing. Not Patty, maybe Patty's term?
Uh, let's see, sorry, here we go, pull up the terms.
Deborah, maybe Deborah.
Deborah, maybe, yeah. So. Uh, I think Ed was at the, um. Emergency planning thing, but I didn't, um, have a chance to. I didn't have a chance to see him as it was breaking up, but I think it was him that was there, okay, so we have. Deborah's term, which. So that term ends. Aug- alright, August, April of twenty five, so it'll be a short remainder and then she can get a full term.
Okay, that sounds like a good idea.
Okay. Here, your answer's your closest, would you mind? Richard's second.
Lead of the board and for a term expiring April twenty eighth. Term expiring April twenty twenty five.
Yes, okay, all in favor, okay, all right, thank you. Uh, Ari did.
I have, I have the key.
You survived the budget and showed, we have shown our great ability at maintenance.
So this, the term that you're, the position, the seat that you're taking right now is seat number three and that, um. So you'll be serving the remainder of the term that's open, so it's an open seat, which means. April of twenty twenty five is the remainder and then you'll be eligible for two of your own full terms, so.
Gives you a nice interim period to. Read the fine print, I didn't.
Okay, so, um, so the other, we started to talk about this, but can we, um, set a. Date, are people able to set a date at this point for a planning meeting in twenty twenty five, um, where we can. Lay out that calendar and layout our priorities, um, if people don't have their calendars, I can send an email, um, with a. Doodle poll if you want, or, um, or let me know what, uh, do, do people prefer to try and still do an evening one or. Is this something that requires more brain power, people want to do?
When, when is the January board meeting, what's the date on there?
Sixteen.
Sixteenth, can we meet at like six PM on the sixteenth? Would that work?
Or do you want more time ahead of time to flush things out?
Um, I mean, it's. Um, I mean, it's, it's a group decision, you know, if people feel like that's sufficient to, uh, hash things out, and they want to do it as part of a long, a long evening, that's, I mean, whatever people.
I mean, if it's gone over seven o'clock, that's okay if we're in the middle of discussing stuff, because then the other board, if you kind of, you know, because a lot of us discuss there, would have been something we would have handled in the board meeting.
And I'm happy to, um, like, get pizza or something, or if people want to do food or something like that, we can get, if, if people want to do it as a. If that works, that's fine.
That worked well the last time.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's easier for me to do it.
Yeah, but you have to usually.
I do, I have a, I have a union meeting on the same day, so I'll try to get here as close to six as, what I can try to do is maybe leave there, well, it was canceled today, and I can just leave.
Are you sure?
Stay for the whole, yeah.
Okay.
Well, we appreciate that.
So we want to do six o'clock on the sixteenth. Thanks for that suggestion. Okay, perfect. That is a date. Thank you. Okay, uh, so I have one other old business, it's sort of old business, sort of new business, I guess, so old business in that like last year during our budget discussions and staff salary discussions, we noted, um, we agreed to holiday bonuses again, um, which we've been doing the past five, uh, may- maybe more than five years, but what I've been tracking here. Um, so last year we did a hundred dollars, um, for, uh, last year it was a hundred dollars for, um, Elaine, Jody, Vicky, and Kim, and Cheryl had just started, so it was twenty-five for Cheryl, because she had just like literally started. Um, but this year, so it would be, um, Elaine, Jody, Cheryl. Uh.
Sadie.
Thank you, Sadie, uh, Rebecca technically is doing programming and Kim, so, um, yeah, so do people feel comfortable with that decision from last year, or given our discussions this year, just around budget, um? Be good with that? Okay, alright, so I'll tell Kim she can, there's still a payroll for this, uh, this year, so I'll ask her to process that. We do it as part of the payroll because it's, takes care of everything. Okay, thank you. Uh, alright, no public, I don't think anybody joined the.
Yeah, she still qualifies as public.
Yeah, now, now you're just. No comments from you. Uh, no correspondence, uh, anybody have anything else that we didn't cover or? Alright, then I want to wish everybody a very, very happy holiday and good wishes for us all for a good new year.
And let us know about Kim, make sure she's.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
That's a little scary.
She said she was gonna tell me what she did, and I'm assume, I'm, I'm hoping that, because I didn't hear from her, doesn't mean she didn't go to get checked out, but Logan was gonna be there, so I'm hoping that. Yeah, so. Yeah, alright, I've got, we'll let you guys know, that what I hear. Alright, so motion to adjourn, Ari, Liz, alright, all in favor? The journey at eight twenty-two and the meeting, or, and that, wait a minute, uh, and the recording. And, oops, and the recording.